It's six oh six, I now call this being to order. Mr. Castiano, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's six oh six, I now call this being to order. Mr. Castiano, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's six oh six, I now call this being to order. Mr. Castiano, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Next item, establish your in the quorum.
Renee Rodriguez?
Here.
Sister Nevades is absent, well, Duran?
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia is absent, Victor Perez?
Aye. Excuse me, here, I apologize.
Here.
Public comment, Teresa Martinez, our first speaker. Ms. Martinez, you have three minutes.
I'll be representing her.
Your name, sir?
Yes, Rololfo Arzaga. May I start?
Yes.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Rololfo Arzaga. I am here on behalf of my family, Teresa Martinez and my father, Luis Miguel Dominguez. We are here to file, I guess, a citizen complaint. On the day of August 5th of 2019, on Middle Drain Road, around the time of 5 o'clock, 5:30, there was a vehicle, a Dodge Charger, orange, of color orange, that was traveling southeast on Middle Drain Road. At the time, my dog, which is a blue healer by the name of Canela, of 11 months old, and my mother were standing outside of the house, near the gate approximately 3 to 4 feet away from Middle Drain Road, which is approximately where the pavement ends and where the dirt starts and which the property of 11121 Nueva Misión starts, which is our family's home. And around that time, my mother observed a possible Dodge Challenger by an orange color coming in, traveling southeast, and the car seemed to merge onto the dirt with the start of the property. So if you can imagine, the road here, which is Middle Drain, and there's a small bit piece with the gate of the property. And my mother observed the car coming in towards the dirt path and as a consequence, that vehicle ran over our dog, Canela, and then proceeded to continue southeast on Middle Drain Road away from sight. Not only this, but there was another witness, we still do not know who he is, but it was a good Samaritan who also saw the incident and they came back to our property and gave us a copy of what could possibly be the plates. So they came back and they say, hey, this happened, here are the plates. And we're just requesting that there be a follow-up. We, my mother did contact law enforcement. Law enforcement did arrive and we kept the dog there, I guess, as per se evidence to show that there actually was an incident. But the police officer informed us that there was nothing you could do, although he promised to come back, to hold on tight and that he would come back with information or no information. Unfortunately, he never came back, we waited around 1 hour, but he never came back. So...
Sorry, your time is up?
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
May I approach with a letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, go ahead and give it to our city manager and clerk so that we can go ahead and follow up on that, okay? Thank you, sir.
Alfonso Cruz Pacheco? Mr. Pacheco, you have 3 minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name's Alfonso Pacheco. I live at 553 Sun Haven. I've been living there for almost 25 years. I built my home there with my bare hands with my family, working with me there. I'm here to discuss a public hearing that was, took place August 6th, which I wasn't able to attend regarding a replat of my neighbor's property. We all have half acres of that area. This property at 557 has not, it's more, like I said, it's been only 25 years and it's, there's a mobile home there. When I bought the, the property there from Mr. Tom, Thomas Burks, deceased, he gave us a contract where we were supposed, the area there, we're supposed to have a, built a home, a modest home, but within 5 years or 4. We were able to put a mobile home there for those 4 years. Now, it's almost been, like I said, 25 years, this mobile home with my, my neighbors there, they still have that mobile home, there's some more area, more mobile homes in that area also. What I like, I'm here to discuss is that I'm, I'm really against this replat of this mobile home. It's a split, replat what it is. They're asking for a replat, split. I'm asking for you all to deny that in regards to my, you know, my property there. They, I'm pretty sure that what it is, they're gonna be putting in a mobile home there. Another one. I have no idea what, what's their idea of doing that because they're my neighbors. But it is a concern to me that having all mobile homes there, it's, they're gonna devalue my property, being that I'm his neighbor. I guess that's all I can say, I don't know if you can help me on this. Because it's 25 years and they're still there.
Sir, could you repeat your address, please?
553 Sun Haven Drive. Sun Haven, S-U-N-H-A.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Sun Haven.
It's 553?
553.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 25?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Alright, do we, can, can we continue, please?
Miriam Cruz? Ms. Cruz, you have 3 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rolarte. Good evening, council members and staff. I wanted to, once again, re, uh, thank you all for your service. I'm glad to see the pro mayor temp being used. I never think that it gets to be used and someone just gets assigned and...
It was a price to be taken.
I wanted to, to one, thank the efforts of the police department on Stockyard. I have seen a little bit more patrol on Stockyard. Nevertheless, there's still some speeding going on. Even with the, with the speed limit radars, even with knowing that there's probably, you know, a unit around, people continue to speed through there. And so it continues to be an issue and again, I, I would like to see a roundabout be placed there as I mentioned more than a year ago. I also wanted to mention that there's still no recycling bin here on city council chambers. It's something also that I've mentioned probably maybe 2 years ago or more because I probably mentioned it a lot back then. I would love to see a recycling bin, especially since y'all drink a lot of plastic bottles and tea bottles. I think it'd be great in addition to our city. The other thing I wanted to mention is an ordinance that Mr. Teresa's will be proposing. I'm really excited about it. I'm very happy that he's bringing it up. I'm beyond excited and so I hope that gets approved soon. And I'm hoping that the next ordinance that gets brought up is one about parks. What developers are required to add to parks and whatnot. I hope that that's maybe the next on the list that the planning and zoning department can work on. That's my wish list. Oh, and I also wanted to mention the fact that during the planning and zoning meetings, there is a small presentation that happens before the public hearings. It's something that I've requested before and it's something that I continue to request during the city council meetings. I think it's important for us, the public, to know what it is that we may want to speak about other than just reading the, the agenda item. I think it would be nice to get a small presentation and more explanation of what it is that the public hearing is going to be about so that people know whether they want to speak about it or not. And I also wanted to mention that there is a planning and zoning seat that continues to be unfilled and it has been unfilled for several months. There are a few city planning and zoning commissioners that have been absent as well and I yet continue to be going to those meetings as well, very involved, very interested.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Rolarte, Ms. Navarro.
Lorraine Frescas? Ms. Frescas, you have 3 minutes.
Okay, I'm, I wanted to discuss the property on 557 Sun Haven.
Thank you.
Okay. We wanted to split the property, we're gonna, we wanted to remove the old home, mobile home that's there and put a new double wide. And that's why we wanted to split the property. And the reason we haven't removed it is because my parents that live in the home are disabled and so I care for them and that's why I'm, I, I need to get a new home. Also because I've become ill and I need a bigger home for a wheelchair. So that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Andrew Apodaca? Mr. Apodaca, you have 3 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. My name is Andrew Apodaca, I live at 9916 Juanita Duran. Reason I'm here today is because over the last year or so, I've resorted to the Socorro Central app that has made it much more convenient to come to the city office or not even come to the city offices to file complaints, not only in my neighborhood but through what I see throughout the city. I'm here today because about 53 weeks ago, 53, a complaint was filed amongst other hard copy complaints that I've made here at the, the office next door, okay? And this one particular complaint, 53, 53 weeks ago, has yet to be updated. And that's kind of the norm for this Socorro Central app as far as follow-ups being done. The complaints I've made have been directed towards neighbors, cleanup. Some of you are familiar with that because I've spoken to on the phone about that. Not because I'm wanting a sympathy card or anything like that, but because of these complaints going unanswered, not enforced, apparently not followed up, the residents haven't complied. And like I said, I'm not looking for sympathy here, but last night I finally fell victim to one of the complaints where a dry tree fell, took out my fence, almost took out my son's truck and fell within feet of my house. Had efforts been made to meet with a, to meet and follow up with a homeowner, I wouldn't have expected any damage, now I'm accruing that damage unless the neighbor complies. I've reached out on another issue where someone's gonna get hurt and property damage, same issue. I'll use the word, I'll use the term bully since it's passed around a lot. Because I raised issue with that, another entity feels that it hasn't, doesn't have to be done. Again, no follow-ups been made. More damage, possibly property, fencing, lives are gonna get hurt. And when I'm told that I have to comply and they don't, it leaves a sad and sorry taste in my mouth. So I'm here today to let you know that Socorro Central isn't being used to its full capabilities, I'm assuming, or the fact that code enforcement isn't following through on these requests. Because weeks later after the complaints are made and you can text in the status of that complaint, it gets updated, but nothing changes. This isn't for my neighborhood, this is for everybody, okay? So I'm reaching out to you guys here in person, since I've done it over the phone. Follow up, help me out, help the citizens out. We don't want to lose any more property. We just want everything to be taken care of the way it should be and get a good response from y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And both of all our speakers.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we go on to item number 5, recognition of life-saving award to Officer Nathaniel Dusterman and Chief Burton.
Evening, council. That's Dusterman, that's okay. So every once in a while, we get to do this, it doesn't happen a lot, thank goodness, because it means that somebody's life was in jeopardy when we had to, when we do this recognition of an officer, but it also points out to our residents, our community, that our officers out there are, are, are out there doing outstanding jobs. So what I'd like to do before I recognize Officer Dusterman is just read what his actions were that caused me to, to give him this award tonight. On August 7th, 2019, Officer Nathaniel Dusterman was assisting the El Paso Police Department with providing traffic control for the arrival of President Donald Trump. While directing traffic, Dean's section of Paisano and Concepcion, Officer Dusterman observed a distressed adult female standing on the side of the road with a baby in her arms. Officer Dusterman approached the female to provide assistance and was told that her 1-month-old baby was not well. Officer Dusterman observed the baby to have red and white spots, which was indicative of a heat rash, dry lips, and to be sweating profusely. The exterior temperature during the time of the day was 104 degrees. Officer Dusterman placed the child and her mother into his police unit and transported the mother and child with lights and sirens to the University Medical Center for Treatment. Medical staff was able to stabilize the baby's condition and later informed us that due to the extreme heat, the age of the child, and the signs of heat stroke, Officer Dusterman's quick response not only prevented further injury to the child, but in all likelihood saved its life. Officer Dusterman's actions represent his selfless service to the Socorro Police Department and the City of Socorro. Officer Dusterman is hereby recognized for his devotion and hard work for keeping the City of Socorro a safe community for all citizens and is presented with the department's life-saving award. I'd like to do that right now.
Come on up here, ma'am.
Item number six, recognition of the First. I apologize. Group photo.
You good?
All right, item number six, recognition of the First Citizens Academy.
I'm up again, so. So we recently completed a ten-week program for our First Citizens Police Academy. This involved a group, we started with thirteen individuals that spent ten weeks with us. We finished up with a core group, we like to say, of eight individuals that finished the program with us. It was an opportunity for the community to make contact with the police, to get to know us one-on-one. They got to ask us questions about what we do and why we do things. They also got to see some of the technology, some of the investigation techniques that we use, some of the forensic sciences that we use. And they're invited to do a ride-along with us as well, so they'll be out riding along. I do want to recognize Sergeant Kustic for her outstanding work in putting this together. It was an idea of mine to start with, and it wasn't really anything except for in here. There was nothing on paper, and Sergeant Kustic managed to transfer all of my thoughts and put them into a program that I think was very successful. We already had our graduation last Tuesday, but I wanted to hand out the certificates in front of the community, in front of your peers, so to speak, the residents, and especially the council, so that they would recognize the hard work that you did with us. This was a commitment that we asked for, this was over two hours a day. We ended up by spending, it was supposed to end at eight-thirty, I don't think we got out on time ever, because there's always a lot of questions that came up. So usually, we'd be there from six to ten every Tuesday. So I appreciate you guys. We do have a couple of video, well, we have one video that we're going to show real quick. It's just going to be some comments from you all about, I think I said that right? About what the experiences were like for the Citizens Academy.
You're going to be our masters out there, right? Because you've got a lot of information, you're a senior officer, so that when you hear misinformation out there, and there's a lot that goes on, need to put out by just the residents, because of social media, because they think something's trending, and everything picks up speed, and then it snowballs, and before you know it, some rumor is now the truth. Or the national media does the same thing, as far as putting out false information on law enforcement's all about, so you got a little taste about what law enforcement is about, right?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Chief Burton, and your department for giving me the chance to have attended this class, Citizen Police Academy course. I would like to personally name and compliment Police Sergeant Kustic, Lieutenant Gray, Lieutenant Smith, Dispatch Supervisor Harold O'Hara, Officer Kena Amilad, and Officer King for their assistance, and the insurance, our safety, mine and my classmates.
My name is Sergeant Jesse Montalongo, United States Army retired, US Army twenty-eight years. This is the First Citizens Police Academy. I was fortunate enough to, Chief Burton and Sergeant Kustic were really on me, also the city manager, to join this program. Ms. Rolarte was, they know I like crime watch, they know I like the military, and I love Socorro as a city and as a whole. So they figured that this would be good for me to develop more tools to help me with what I like to do, and that's helping people. And people are talking to the police now, versus them being scared of the police. They've embraced them, and we'd like to see police in our neighborhood. For the people here, if you educate them and they get more knowledge, then there's no telling what they can do, they have a lot of talent, they just don't know it yet. They just need a chance. And the only way they're going to get a chance is if they know about different programs being offered. I think that we're headed in the right direction, and you've got to start somewhere. So I thank you, Victor, and I thank the rest of the city employees for supporting us and for believing in us, because it's made me more positive as far as an individual, but also it made me more of a team player.
Okay, so my name's Diana Alvarez, I'm eighteen, and I've lived here my whole life. I've been really wanting to like start a career in the law enforcement, but I didn't really know where to start. And so my mom sent me the Twitter post that they had posted, and so I was like, alright, I'll give it a shot and see how it goes. I've gotten to know them a lot more, I've been on social media with the department, like with the city, so I get to know a lot more now. Learned about the felony traffic stops and the crime scenes, the fingerprinting, the use of force, it's pretty interesting, I really liked it. I loved everything, everything was my favorite one. Maybe the hands-on type of stuff, I really liked doing the traffic stop outside with all the vehicles and stuff, and getting to get inside and like pretend that we were doing it. Give it a shot. I was afraid at first, because I didn't know what was going to happen, but after, it kind of made me feel a lot more happy with myself, because I did it, I got to learn a lot more. And then I got to find respect for those, for the officers. So I really respect them for what they do and everything. Major, based on the social media posts that we see, it's like they put officers in a very low spot, and I mean, now that I see stuff like that, and I know what they go through, I'm like, hey, guys, you know what, no, it's not, it's not what we think it is. Like you guys have to get to know them, and I have a lot of respect for them.
My name is Andres Gomez, I lived here in Socorro most of my life, with the exception of maybe six years. My opinion of the police department growing up would be more negative than positive, only based on family and the area that I lived in. It's three hundred and sixty degrees, it's just completely informative what they've talked about, and...
There was a lot of questions that were answered, that I really couldn't find the answer for, so that's why I came to take this class, so I can be informed, get the right information. Class, it's eight weeks. We come in on Tuesdays, six-thirty, sometimes it'll finish at eight, sometimes it'll finish at eight-thirty-ish. And depending on the talk, it could go on a little bit longer, but most of the times, it's about two hours. Are so informative that if the class would be longer, we would still be, we would still stay a little longer. My favorite talk throughout the class, I would have to say, it was use of force, only because of what is shown and what is done. And it's two different levels. And they were very, very informative as why they have to take these steps and how fast these steps can execute. If you have a negative opinion about our police department, I would say, join the class. It'll change your mentality and give you the opportunity to ask questions that you want to know the true answer for. Nothing, nothing but respect. They are out there doing their job, and their job is to keep us safe. Their job is to protect the community, and just respect. There's a bond that me and my son built during this course that we didn't have before. It's almost a unity that we have now, based on law enforcement and what law enforcement does. Yeah, I would, I would recommend bringing a child. Sergeant Kustic is, she's a character. She, she's a very wise character. She knows almost what you want to hear and how you want to hear it. She's got a perfect way of wording, and she's honest, she's truly honest. I like the chief, he's, he's been here for six months, and the changes that he's implementing are all positive changes. Great attitude, and highly, highly self-motivated, I really like the chief.
Alrighty, well, my name is Andrew Gomez Jr. I'm twenty-two years of age now, in August, and I've been living in Socorro, born and raised, for my whole life. I've loved it, and it's my city, anything like that. Because I knew, similar to fire people or any paramedics, anyone like that, they are there to help us. Each individual class, we covered a wide variety of them. Interjection from students asking questions, we broke down to that topic. So even though there was a guideline, we ended up covering a lot. And some of the topics that stood out most, even though they weren't pushed, having to be a police officer, having to know all this, having your limits, not being able to do this, and it's a huge, amazing responsibility these people do, and I have nothing but great respect for them. So it was on a Tuesday night, perfect scheduling to fit with all my scheduling, nothing went wrong with it, and it was ten individual classes. Really great, we just finished up the ceremony, which is fun, there's cake, smiles all around, and...
Very great, did we talk about policing, traffic, crime scene, DWI, all of their amazing stuff. We actually got to put hands on outside for traffic, how the police do handle a traffic stop and everything. Favorite class, it was a DWI, we got to do the, use the goggles for the, what's it called? The test when we drunk, and it was fun, because they're in a different way. I'm like, oh, they do amazing stuff, like they have to work, and like they do, and they have all this type of stuff they have to do with stuff, you know?
Do you appreciate more of...
I have like a different view, because when I would get pulled over, I was like, ah, but now I understand them, like their point of view, and I was like, oh, okay, like, now I know one of the, one of the stuffs they do, like what, how they move and everything, they're all familiar. Now you get it?
What's...
My name is Jesus Alvarado, I've been living in Socorro for over five years now, going on six. I heard about the class while I was at work, I worked for the city of Socorro, and I saw the flyer come up one day, and I thought it would be something great to do and learn. Before entering this class, I would see them every day at work and everything like that, and I would see the same amount of, the same officers and everything like that, so I kind of thought that they were a little understaffed. Okay, what I learned is them being understaffed and learning everything that they have to go through on a day-to-day basis, it's amazing what they do, that they accomplish on a daily basis. Knowing now what they have to do, it just, it just shows me that we have some really great officers here. I would have to say, the crime scene investigation, kind of forensics fingerprinting part, was really interesting. The whole thumbprint part, the way that the officer, Officer, Sergeant King, talked about how they did the training and everything, they had to, you know, search for the body and everything like that, and it just, it was very fascinating on how they, how they do all that stuff. The staffing, just like I said, you know, touching back on that again, just the fact of what these guys do with the little that they have is amazing. So it was a pleasant surprise, I would say. I would say, if you have doubts about coming into this class, I mean, you're going to have doubts about any class that you want, that you're going to take or anything like that, but you're going to be so surprised at everything that you're going to learn, and all the great information you get, and you're going to have a better appreciation for your local law enforcement.
So I would say that the goal of education is what we wanted, and to have them go back out onto the street as ambassadors for the law enforcement community, and as a liaison, act as a liaison between our department and the community is going to take place at this point, and I thank you for your participation in this. What I'd like to do now is, we'll bring you up one at a time, you can come get your certificate from me. Counsel, if you'd like to go up here as well, please.
Chief, when's your next class?
Oh, so let me put a plug in, so we're going to start again October first. Sergeant Kustic has some sign-ups at the back of the classroom. Oh, back of the classroom, good, now I think I'm back in the seats better. At the back of the council, and she'd be more than happy to have you fill out a form for us and then participate in the next class. The next one will go from October first to December seventeenth, only because we're taking a break for the Thanksgiving holidays, so I don't want to interfere with that, so we'll be off for a week, alright?
Thank you.
Ready? Alright, so we're going to start, we're going to start with one of my favorite characters here, Sergeant Montalongo. Sergeant Montalongo asks a lot of questions. That's it. So we did get a lot of good feedback, I read some of the comments that the class put out, and this one is from one of our youngsters, as you heard in the video, she's only eighteen years old, right Sandra? There's Sandra. So Sandra would like us to reach out to more young people, so that's what we're going to do. We're going to start an explorer program, and we're doing a youth academy, right? We're going to do a youth academy for, so we take your suggestions to heart, but come on up here, Sandra. So this one I had to think long and hard about. So Mr. Guerrero and I have had a relationship since I've been here, about six months ago. So Mr. Guerrero has visited me several times in the department, and we talk about different things, but he's a really passionate person about what happens in his neighborhood. So I don't think I'm out of school when I say that I think that this helps you understand law enforcement does, and obviously you can reach out, reach out, come up here, Mr. Guerrero. Should I do these two together? So we do have a father-and-son team, and again, very, very much involved in the questioning as far as getting answers from us. As a matter of fact, one of the other projects that we have is, we're redoing our Humvee, we have an H2 Humvee, it's going to be our community policing vehicle, and we asked the community for a design that we can put on the Humvee, and Mr. Gomez was nice enough to provide us with that, so Mr. Gomez, come on up here. And then we got Junior, okay. So it's always nice to have the young people, and like Mr. Ju, Mr. Gomez Jr., was saying in the video, sometimes, you know, appreciation of police is not there, appreciation of law enforcement is not there, appreciation, especially from the younger generations, as far as what we're doing, is misleading sometimes, based on false information that's out there. I think Junior here gained a lot of information from us, and I appreciate his participation, come up here. Alright, next one. Marquis Duran, so... No, again, you know, it's always nice to see our youngsters participate in the academy, so I appreciate his time, he was saying the fact that the, you know, it's Tuesday night, it is the two and a half hours that we ask you to participate, but I think it went pretty, pretty quick, and thank you very much. Ms. Alvarez.
Congratulations.
Oh, it's you. Okay, alright, I gave you the wrong, you came up and took the wrong one. Uh-huh, okay, so where's Sandra at?
She was...
She's not here.
She is unable to come, because she's fifteen, each of us are being sent here.
Okay, alright, so you're going to come up and accept this for me? From, on behalf of Sandra. Alright, last but not least, Mr. Alvarado. So Mr. Alvarado already works for the city of Socorro. But this is just a different aspect of what we do out there. We actually do work with code enforcement, because of the interaction that we have to have as far as law enforcement, code enforcement, some of the actions that need to be taken. We take care of the public property, and the code enforcement takes care of the private property for us. So we do have a lot of communication back and forth, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Family, one family.
I'll be on her back.
Maybe I'm going to kiss her.
You hit this last one yourself.
One, two.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please, ladies and gentlemen? Before we continue to the, the next agenda item, the consent agenda, at this time, I like for us, because it deserves its own place, I believe, if we can have, if we can stand and have a moment of silence for the individuals that lost their lives, and those individuals that were hurt in the shooting that took place at Selviss, well, the Sam's, and rather, the Walmart at Selvissumal. Thank you. Alright, next item of the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hi, Nelo Vickers.
Hi.
Please turn over the steps and protocols.
Yes.
And Ivan Colovialo.
Yes.
Alright, item number thirteen, public hearing on the city's Socorro's property tax rate. It is six fifty-two, the hearing is now open.
Miriam Cruz, I wanted to mention or ask a question, hopefully can be answered by anyone. I don't really care who, but hopefully by anyone, someone in this room. The ordinance number four seven one, which I believe that's the one we're on. Well, there's not listed on the agenda, but I grabbed it from the back. I was just told that maybe this is not the final version, because it doesn't have numbers in it. But if we turn to page three, there is a number of listed things. For example, construction, reconstruction, improving of sidewalks, streets, roads, drainage, bridges.
The tax rate.
It's your...
It is, the, what will be advertised to...
Is that in the back? Is that back there, though? That?
Just the ordinances.
So next one? Okay. Then, the property tax rate, I believe is something that you all have been talking about prior. And this is kind of why I had asked for a small presentation to be done before each item, is so that people know what we're talking about. Obviously, I'm confused, I'm on number fourteen, I skipped one. But it would be nice if whatever you guys are looking at would be provided back there, because I believe it's only in the backup, which is what I'm looking for right now. It might not even be in the backup, I don't know, I don't see it. I'm going to go sit down, because I don't know what I can talk about, because I don't have it in front of me. Again, why I asked for stuff to be presented, thanks.
Yeah, are there, are there any other individuals that would like to speak on the matter of the city of Socorro's property tax rate?
I have a question, we're just going to make a hearing right now?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and it can be adopted or withdrawn in the afterwards.
Alrighty, it's six fifty-five, the hearing is now closed. Item number fourteen, public hearing of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Socorro, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Socorro, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation series two thousand and nineteen, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of annual vid velorum, ad velorum tax, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures related thereto. including a paying agent, registrar agreement, and purchase contract, approving the form of an official statement and declaring an effective date. It is six fifty-six. The hearing is now open on this item.
Page three, as I was mentioning, has a list of things that it looks like is the reason why we'd be issuing these certificates of obligation, some of which are the construction, streets, roads, improving all those things, drainage, construction installation of stormwater management, so on and so forth. There are seven things listed. The last one is legal, fiscal, and engineering fees in connection with the projects listed above. Uh, I have two questions. The first one is, because these things are listed, does that mean that the monies that come from the, this, these twenty nineteen certificates of obligation are only to be used for these projects? And if not, then, um, what would be the ramifications if it's used for something else? And if it is only supposed to be used for the things listed on that first paragraph on page three, starting with whereas, and the city somehow, some way, in the future, does use those monies for something else than what's listed, what, if anything, could the constituents do to bring that to your intention and make sure that that's not gonna happen? If it does, what are the consequences to that? I also had a short, very, very brief conversations with Jim outside, asking a couple of questions, the attorney and, an attorney who's sitting in the front here, who may be talking about this item, about some boilerplate language, that is on page twenty-seven. Page twenty-seven talk, lists a few individuals and then states, one of, the last one named is the finance director of the city, and then it says, "And all other officers, employees, and agents of the city shall be, and they are hereby expressly authorized, empowered, and directed from time to time at any time to do and perform all such acts and things, and to execute and acknowledge and deliver in the name and under the corporate seal on behalf of the city, all such instruments whether or not herein mentioned, as may be necessary or desirable in order to carry out the terms of the provisions of this ordinance." And it continues. My only concern was that it seemed really broad to include all employees and that they could do, uh, basically, anything to be able to execute whatever to... And I say whatever because it's really anything may, that may be necessary, desirable, to carry out the terms and provisions. Um, I understand that it may be boilerplate language, but with this and any other ordinances that we pass for the city, I believe that it's important that we try to use the least amount of legalese that we can so that these ordinances and others can be understood and read easily by any one of our constituents to be able to understand what it all means. I understand that there may be some limitation language at the end of the sentence and even in between that says from time to time, I don't believe it's enough to direct, excuse me. I don't believe it limits enough, that it seems like any employee could do anything that they believe is gonna further this ordinance, so, um, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, it is seven o'clock. The hearing for item number fourteen is now closed. Now, item number fifteen. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Socorro, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of, of City of Socorro, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation series two thousand and nineteen, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of annual ad velorum tax, approving and authorizing the execution of all instruments and procedures related thereto, including a paying agent, registrar agreement, and a purchase contract, approving the form of, excuse me, approving the form of an official statement and declaring an effective date.
Make, make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a speaker for this item, Miriam Cruz?
Hi, Mayor Protan, council members, city staff. My name is Tom Lawrence, I'm the city's financial advisor and have served in that capacity for twenty-five years or so. And this transaction was priced yesterday and is presented to you for your approval tonight via the ordinance. I, I don't know if you have a handout, I can just give you a quick, you know, three to five minute dissertation of what, what the numbers are. Essentially, we have a ten million dollar project. And so we put the numbers together and they went out to investors yesterday. And once we had the numbers that, we had enough investors that agreed to the interest rates, the lawyers drafted the, the documents, I finalized the numbers, and it all comes together in a bunch of legal documents, and I, I handle the numbers only. So if you take a look at the first page of that handout, you'll notice that there's several lines, it's different maturities, the certificates will mature over a twenty-year period, and they're marketed to different investors. Someone might buy the twenty twenty-one maturity, someone might buy, you know, the twenty thirty-five through twenty forty maturities, and so they all carry different interest rates. And, you know, you might notice if you go for a fifteen-year mortgage, you'll get a lower interest rate than if you go for a thirty-year mortgage. You'll see that in the yield column. Now, the way bonds are marketed, it isn't just going to the bank and getting a mortgage loan at a fixed rate. These are fixed rates, but they're marketed, and they carry, what, what these bonds, these certificates carry is a three percent rate. And we're borrowing a par amount or a principal amount of just a little over nine point six million. Well, you might wonder, why, how can we get a ten million dollar project financed with nine point six million dollars? The three percent is higher than the market rate. The market rate is over in the yield column. And so what happens is, if you go all the way to the last column, that's what the investors are actually paying for you to pay back nine point six. You're gonna pay back nine point six million at three percent, but they're paying you almost ten point two million, and they're gonna receive a yield, an average yield for all of this of about two point five percent. So that's how it works. They like, the, the, interest rates are so low right now that they like a higher coupon for future purposes. It sometimes makes it easier to sell a three percent than a one percent. And, and they'll, they'll trade at different levels the day after they're issued. So anyway, that just summarizes how that's priced. The next page is the debt service schedule, shows you the annual debt service. You'll notice through twenty thirty-four, it's lower and then it bumps up the last five years. The next page helps explain, well, the next page is sources and uses. As mentioned, you're issuing nine point six million, nine million six thirty-five. They're paying a premium of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, so you're gonna get ten million one hundred and seventy-four thousand and change. We're gonna deposit ten million into your project fund on the closing date. And the rest of it pays the costs, the underwriter discount, the legal and consulting fees, the attorney general's fees, the credit rating, and so forth. And that's how we fund the ten million. The next page, um, page four, looks like this, with, it's got some color to it. The left-hand column is your existing debt, which is approximately one point eight million. It's paid off in twenty thirty-four. So the way I structured this, it, it's a wraparound structure. It means that the debt service is lower up front and, and we can balloon it back out towards the end. The numbers in red are not being dealt with tonight except in a first hearing, reading, hearing you've got for a delegated pricing ordinance. You've got a very nice refunding bond issue that we can do later this year.
Sir, yes, sir, Rodriguez has a question. Okay.
I just want you to repeat that about our interest, that it's low, and then at the end, why? Because most of our constituents are not gonna understand why it is. I do.
Your tax rate. We do not want, we don't want your tax rate to just explode to pay off these. So we have a very minor change in the, in the tax rate to cover debt service for this new issue. If we were to do, say, level debt service or any other kind, you know, other than a wraparound, you'd have a much higher tax rate.
Thank you for that.
Excellent question, I'm sorry, I...
No, 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 I, I, I do understand this. I just wanted them to hear it because they might ask, hey, well, why we pay so little? And then all of a sudden, we're gonna get a, it's like a balloon payment, right?
That's, that's... It, it's correct, it's not, not a true balloon because you are paying, you are paying principal off every year. If you go back to page two, you'll see the principal that's getting paid off every year.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, so that, that, it's, yeah, exactly, but it is, it acts like a balloon. It is a balloon to a certain extent, it's a limited balloon.
Yeah, it's a limited, but it's just so that they can understand...
Right.
Why.
That's what I do, I structure, it's like sculpture, I like playing with clay.
And it's good, it's good.
We have a refunding, but we can't do it yet. We have to get within ninety days of the optional redemption date for these other three series that are out there. We'll come back, actually, there's a first hearing tonight and then your next meeting, you can approve what's called a delegated pricing ordinance. And then, at the end of this year, we will probably have, sometime in November, December timeframe, we can price those refunding bonds. And those numbers in red are how much your debt service would go down based on today's interest rates. We don't know what the rates will be then, but the delegated pricing ordinance will allow us to work with Adriana and Charlie. And as long as we meet the parameters in this other ordinance that you'll approve at the next meeting, we're gonna capture these savings. That way, you'll notice that the debt service gets very level again in that green column. And that the tax rate goes up a little bit and it stays the same. And this is based on your current tax base. If your tax base keeps going up, these future rates are gonna go down, just by virtue of that. So, um, the last couple of pages deals with the delegated pricing ordinance, that's not the certificates of obligation. So, um, if any of you have any questions on the certificates of obligation or the, kind of the related delegated pricing for the refunding bonds, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
If I, just have, just so that, if I remember correctly, the COs are predicated on, the sale of COs are predicated on also our credit rating, correct?
That's another great question.
So then, I, also, you would just articulate the, the credit rating that the City of Socorro currently has.
It, you have an A rating with standard empires, which is a very good rating. We did, if you'll notice on that sources and uses page, one of the things we're paying for is about twenty-four thousand dollars. For, yes, twenty-five thousand dollars, we're paying to Build America Mutual, which is a bond insurance company, and they have a double A rating. So these bonds got marketed. Investors look at the underlying A rating and they look at the double A insured rating, and it brought their interest rates down even further than they would have been if we just went with the A rating, and it more than, much more than offsets the twenty-five thousand. You don't buy insurance if it doesn't save you more in, in interest over time. So, um, it, this, the rates are just, you guys could not be in the market at a much better time, you know? We just, we, the bond market has been going crazy. Yesterday, the stock market dropped eight hundred points. Well, guess where the money's going? It's going into bonds. And, and, and when there's such a demand for bonds, it pushes the interest rates down and the price is up. That premium, in large part, is due to, you got more of a premium yesterday because there's so much buying pressure on bonds.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Miriam Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Uh, I'd like to just state for the record that my question wasn't answered into a mic. Uh, I believe the gentleman answered my question, but he doesn't have a mic and so if the public is watching at home, they, they probably can't hear what he answered. About whether things listed were going to be, but you're, I know, but I'm, I'm on the mic now and I'm timed, so, sorry. And the second thing is that whatever it is that you guys are looking at right now is not something that was provided in the back, it's not, I believe it was emailed today. And so it's not something that the public has privy to or is being able to follow as you guys are following in front of you. I hope that this is something that gets included into the minutes. Thanks.
Thank you.
May I answer a question?
Yes, sir.
First of all, the, the, the document that she does have is the exact document that you have, except hers doesn't have the numbers because when it was distributed, we didn't have the numbers. We can't price more than a day before your approval. So those documents went out to the public and agendas and everything are done at least three days in advance of the meeting, so it's absolutely impossible. And nobody could do that. You just, you can't get that information out there when you're, you're putting your minutes out there. As for the use of the proceeds, you can only use the proceeds for the stated purposes in the ordinance. You can't use it for anything else. If you get to the end of all of those projects, and I get calls periodically from clients, we've got this other thing over here, can we do it? And the first thing I do is I pull out the ordinance and I look at it. And if I can't answer the question, I'll get the, the bond lawyer that drafted it on the phone and we'll answer it, yes or no. It's either included in the language or it's not. If you get to the end of the road and you can't spend all of the money, you're required by law and by the ordinance to put the money into the debt service fund to pay off the debt. That's...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevaris, the steps and, Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I just have a comment. We, we've, we've done this once before. We haven't deviated from any of the plans that we, we got COs prior to this. We don't plan to do or deviate from the plan that we've set forth. These projects need to get done. We need a lot of infrastructure, nothing, I, I'll continue to say, you know, not a lot, there's a lot of need in the city. And ten million dollars ain't gonna cut it, but it's a start. So we're gonna continue to move the city forward, we're gonna continue to do these projects because our citizens needs better roads, better sidewalks, lighting, et cetera. We need a lot of work done in the city. And that's why we're moving ahead, well, I think that, um, the city should keep moving forward. And this is one way to get there.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez, will you start the roll call again?
Renee Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevaris, the steps and, Ralph Turan?
Yes.
And Ivan Colovialo.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item number sixteen. Public hearing on the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract five, Socorro Grant, block twenty-one, located at ten one six six Socorro Road, from A one agricultural to C two, general commercial for a parking lot. It is seven fifteen. The hearing is now open for this item. The hearing is now open for this item. At this time, the hearing is now closed for this item. Item number 17, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract five Socorro Grant Block 21 located at 10166 Socorro Road from A1 Agricultural to C2 General Commercial for a parking lot. Do I have a motion?
To approve?
Second.
We have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The petitioner is asking for a zoning change on this property just to use the land as a parking lot. This property is located next to the Casa Podaca. The Casa Podaca is outlined here and this is a property they are wanting to rezone to use it as a parking lot only.
I, I know they want to use it as a parking lot. Is it because they're using that parking lot for the business across?
They have plans of doing several things around here. For example, on the Casa Podaca, they want, they are also asking for a zoning change to use the property as a party hall. That's why they need the additional parking. In addition to that, they also want to use the Casa Ortiz across the street as a farmer's market or other businesses and a museum. So, in order for them to have enough parking for all the businesses they want to open in this little area, that's why they want to propose this land to be used as a parking space.
As it is, that's in my area. And so, whenever they've had functions at La Cueva, that's the theater, name of the theater, there, the parking is very limited. And so, this would be a great in order to be able to promote foot traffic if they, it gets to a point of having shops and those kinds of things. So, I, it might be a, I think it's, it's a good idea.
And I have a question. I mean, I, I'm all for the parking. But what if in the future, they decide to change it into something else and not have any parking? And have still these businesses. Is there anything that prevents that? Or that must, that they must have enough parking for the other locations?
So, if they decide to do something different in this area after it's zoned to commercial, when they submit the building plans, we need to make sure that they have enough parking space. Depending on the size of the building, they're going to be building, putting inside the property.
But you're talking about that particular bill, that particular land?
Yes.
Not the other pieces of land? That, what I'm trying to say is if they're going to be owning that whole section there-
This area is subject to the Historical Landmark Commission. So, then, whatever they, they build has to be in compliance with, with-
Right.
Ours and the historical-
What I'm trying to get at is, is that they don't build something there where all the, where everybody's going to have to go back to reverting parking on the sides?
Oh.
That's what I'm trying to make sure that-
It stays in the parking lot.
It stays a parking lot so the other two businesses have enough parking and it can revert back to being, um, no parking.
I don't know if we can draw that, could we?
Jim?
No, there's no special conditions. The buildings that are there, the ones that you see there are legal non-conforming. However, these buildings have been used for residential purposes. I don't know if, I, I think, if I remember correctly, they have enough room. No, I was confused. No, never mind. I guess that's, that's something that we would need to analyze in the future or you can approve it with a condition to remain as a parking lot.
And the answer is, once you change it to C2, we guess they can use it for other uses that are offered by some kind of-
Right.
And, and extend it to that, still might have parking apartments, but that's not particular zoning, you guys more of a use.
Yes, correct.
So, you, we, you can't deny it based upon, well, you're only going to use it for parking lot. Because once you give them the zoning, then they're eligible to use, if there's 10 items that you could use on the C2, then they can be able to go and say, well, I'm on it on one now, but then I want, I can still do two or eight. And, and you can't really just say, hey, you're stuck on this.
But also, the possibility exists that at one time, the owner may want to sell all that and whoever buys it may want to say, you know what, I want to just not have a parking lot. And I don't think that we would have the necessity, the authority necessarily to be able to prevent that.
Okay.
Can we have a speaker for this item? Miriam Cruz?
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I was there at the planning and zoning when the owner, or part owner, whatever, representative of the owner, was there and explaining what they were planning to do, not only to the parking lot, but with the place across. It does sound like a fantastic venture for the City of Socorro. But my concern is about the, I don't know if you call it ingress or digress, or the coming in and out of the parking lot. Because it is Socorro Road, cars tend to go a little faster than they're supposed to down that road. It is a tight road. And my concern is that if it is going to be used for a party hall, there's usually some drinking involved. There's usually some night time involved where these parties are going to partake. And so, my concern is about the safety and whether or not they're going to have a designated coming in.
You already have the Campanario as a neighbor. The Campanario Ballroom is already a neighbor to them and-
The one right next to them, right here?
Uh, uh, yes.
Here?
To, if, going east-
No, it's at the top.
Going east.
If you just go up-
If you, if you go up a little bit, uh, further east-
I don't want to leave Mr. Terrazza's computer.
Uh, you have the Campanario Ballroom and they do have an ingress and ingress on Socorro Road. And I don't believe that we've had any issues with that. But it's not, not, it's not a concern. My overriding concern there in that area is the lack of sidewalks.
Yes, and if I could just finish my thought because-
And I apologize.
Mr. Reddick took up some of my time. It's fine.
I just wanted to clarify.
Is that if Socorro Road isn't then used, or maybe people start taking up a lack of road, then you're starting to get into neighborhoods and homes and residential area, which may be bothersome to those individuals that may think that people will be only using Socorro Road. But usually, at a party when there's dispersment, people are going all sorts of ways not to have to fight with traffic.
Ms. Cruz, we have an, an exchange of time now. I took up your time. I apologize, but you've already extended-
Extended my time. That's fine. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I think. Thanks.
Any other speakers?
No more speakers. Renee Rodriguez?
Huck, did you want to?
No, no, it's fine.
Refract, refract.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead with the roll call.
Cesar Nevaris is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombiello?
I'm sorry, I didn't, did you say something?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, I'm, I didn't hear him.
Yes.
I didn't hear you at all.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
All right, item number 18, public hearing of inordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and, and rezoning of tracts 3B, 4C, and 4D Socorro Grant Block 21 located at 10180 Socorro Road from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial to use the property for commercial purposes.
Make a motion?
Public hearing?
Sorry, public hearing.
It is 7:24. The hearing is now open for this item. It is 7:25. The hearing for this item is now closed. Item number 18.
19.
Excuse me, 19. Apologies. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tracts 3B, 4C, and 4D Socorro Grant Block 21 located at 10180 Socorro Road from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial to use the property for commercial purposes. Do I have a-
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right.
This is the Casa Podaca, the one I, we just mentioned earlier. They're proposing to use it as a party hall. That's the reason they're asking for a C2 commercial. It never, it has never been rezoned. It, it has always been used for residential purposes.
And the, the staff recommendation is approval, correct?
Yes.
And so did, so did the board.
Okay. All right.
Can we have a speaker? Miriam Cruz?
Okay. Any other?
No more speakers.
All right.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we go on to the Grants Department section of the agenda. Item number 20, discussion and action to adopt Resolution 581 approving the submission of a grant application to the EPMPO's transportation alternative set-aside call for projects for a shared use path for bicyclists and pedestrians along Pasmore Road. The city's match requirement is $144,000, excuse me, $144,041 with 32 cents.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Alejandro Aladez, Grants Coordinator. The El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization does have a call for projects for its transportation alternative set-aside program. This program provides funding for pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure projects. The City of Socorro is eligible. We will submit a grant application in the amount of $514,433.28 for a shared use path for bicyclists and pedestrians along Pasmore Road. Our match is $144,041.32. And the goal of the project is to reduce hazardous conditions for pedestrians and bicyclists along Pasmore Road.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh, do we, do we have speakers? I'll go after speakers.
Do we have any speakers?
No speakers for this item.
Okay. Thank you. I would, I would just make a suggestion that when we bring these up, most people don't really see the actual full number and they see just our number when they don't read the backup. So, could you just say, hey, Socorro is only going to pay 20%, which is so-and-so?
Got it.
That way, they'd understand that it's very important for them to go and do the census-
Yes.
So, that they understand that that money comes from the federal and the state that allows the municipalities to come out and get these grants. So, that's the importance of saying, this is why you need to do the census because it's a correlation to the money that the county i- is, is given by the state and the federal agencies so that we could be able to do more projects with their money at a lower, lower cost.
Absolutely. And, and just to reiterate, it is a 20% match. The federal government is giving us 80% of the cost. But we do have to put a small amount to show that the city is committed to the project. And you're right, the census is very important to get this, these dollars in the El Paso metropolitan region. So, please fill out the census and tell your neighbors.
Also, one last, another thing is that this is a very good example of the City of Socorro trying, whenever possible, trying, alleviating the situation of not having sidewalks. It just so happens that this is one of the areas that we can do that with. And so, it's not that we're not interested in sidewalks. It's that the ability to be able to do them. Thank you so much.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
All righty. Item number 21, discussion, discussion and action to adopt Resolution 582 approving the submission of a grant application to the EPMPO's transportation alternative set-aside calls for projects for a shared use path for bicyclists and pedestrians along Rio Vista Road. The city's match requirement is $102,980, $980.12.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
One more time, Mayor and Council. This is a, an application for the same program. It's the Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program. The city can submit more than one application. We are submitting another, this is the second application for Rio Vista Road. The total project cost is nearly close to $500,000. 80% of it will come from the federal government, which is $367,786.15. Our 20% local match is $102,980.12. And this will provide a shared use path for both, both pedestrians and bicyclists on Rio Vista Road.
Right. Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Once again, I just want you to look at the whole thing. We're doing two projects for, you know, safe routes to school, which is going to alleviate our kids walking on the street. So, it's very important because this money comes to the county, given to the MPO. So, it's very important to do the census. I stress it enough that it's very important because this is only a limited amount. So, if you really think about it, we're all, we're getting almost $800,000. It's almost a million-dollar project on these two. And we're only coughing up from our money 200,000. There could be more money if we go out there and get our neighbors and our relatives to do the census so that we can continue getting more federal and state funds to our MPO. So, it's very important. This is what we're going to continue to do. We're aggressively going out there. And we've done that since 2013 and we're going to continue to do it because this is something that we need.
Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevaris is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombiello?
Yes.
All righty, item number 22, under the Recreation Department, a very interesting agenda item. Discussion and action on assessing, excuse me, discussion and action to enter into memorandum of understanding between the Paso del Norte Paranormal Society, I never thought I would say that, and the City of Socorro.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Pro Tempia and Council. We have a very unique situation in the City of Socorro where we have very unique culture and we're proud of it. We were presented by this opportunity with El Paso, Paso del Norte Paranormal Society, where they would like to do guided ghost tours in effort to share economic development.
Ms. Rodriguez, can you have something? Oh, can I, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. I'm so, I'm very excited. They want to do regular guided ghost tours that not only promote the history of our site. Uh, the site that they would start off with would be the Rio Vista complex, not only the Rio Vista community side, but also chambers and the courtroom as well. Our maintenance department, who have been here for many years, have seen many things. Our planning and zoning department has seen many things. My staff and I have seen many things. And so, they're interested to see what they find in research overnight.
And watch nothing come out.
I have gone with them already, just in a tour to show them the site and the EMF readers have gone off. I have seen it.
No, no, I'm just saying that-
I'm a believer.
They don't come out, they don't come out.
Uh, so, in an effort to develop economic development with this project, they want to split the proceeds with us 50/50.
And what would be the amount, sir?
Uh, we were going to do a student rate of $5 with a valid student ID. Adults would be $10. Tickets would be available online and also at the door.
And this would be a, this is not an overnight type of situation or would be?
No, it would end early morning, like 1:00 AM, but not overnight. And staff would be with them so they wouldn't be alone.
All right, so, we have Ms. Rodriguez, then we have Ms. Colombia Lobos, and then Ms. Turan.
You know what? It's funny because I used to, I, I used to teach, uh-
Citizenship?
Citizenship classes. And, and yes, yes. So, so-
I think we're all surprised that you taught to us.
And I have this smile because, you know, that is- And I have this smile, because, you know, that is kind of creepy too, but, you know, it's like, oh my God. But yes, it's, it's true. So it's, it's a good thing.
Can we also try, I'm sorry, go ahead. Apologize.
I have attended some of these ghost tours. I'm very intrigued. I like anything having to do with spiritual. I do have a very good friend who is a medium, and tells me all sorts of things, and clarifies a lot of things that I did not know, but he's, he's been on the money. So I believe in this stuff, I really do. I'm glad it's coming to Socorro. We have a lot of history here. I've heard a lot of stuff. And I like to include Ralph's building, because I believe he has a guest there that's been living there for quite some time.
And not paying rent.
And he needs to include her on the, on the census.
Yes.
I was going to ask her, would we ever consider, and I don't know if there's, what possibility of this would be, maybe the Socorro Mission area, the cemetery?
Yes, what we wanted to do was go ahead and test it out to see what the market would be like here in Socorro, and then from there explore other areas, such as Casa Polaca, Casas Ortiz, the Mission.
All those areas.
Her name is Mary Sombra de Pasado.
Yes, yeah, she is.
Oh, Ralph, you're next.
No, yeah, very quick, I was just joking, I apologize. I was just telling Ms. Colombia Lobos that she saw the ghost after a few margaritas, because that used to be a restaurant.
No, I don't drink.
No, no, no.
But water.
I apologize. All righty. Ms. Turan.
I've never believed in ghosts.
Oh.
But, but. There was a woman murdered in a building that I own, and I've seen her twice. I'm a believer. And she plays tricks on me all the time, and I'm a believer, because things that I know I've placed, she's moved. She's thrown things at me. So I am a big believer now, and I think this would be very, very good for Socorro. And I think that, I know that some people are a little skeptical, but.
Who, me? I, I need.
I didn't mention any names.
No, no, no.
But I do, I do believe in ghosts now, and I think that this would be great for Socorro.
All righty. I get, are you more comments? Any more, any speakers?
Yeah, I have a comment. I have a comment. When I was doing that at night, I, I, I turned around, and I swore I saw somebody standing in the door. And that was here at, third building?
Mm-hmm.
I think it was, third building. And the same thing happened to me at Sombra del Pasado. I went there and I ate, because I knew the, the owner at the time, and then I saw this lady pass, and it kind of creeped me out, right? But, but it, it, those are things that, that did, I didn't believe. But once you see, that you can see right through the person, and you can see the background, it's like, you know, it just, it just, it, it doesn't creep me out. It's just, it's something that it, it, it makes you wonder, and it, it just really does.
I know, I, I agree, no, I agree. I, I agree. All righty, let's go ahead and call the question.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez Esposito, Ralph Turan.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item number twenty-three, under the Police Department portion, discussion and action on assessing a twenty-five dollar per hour fee for usage of off-duty marked patrol units where a unit is required, and to direct city administration to prepare an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance amendment to implement the fee.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Evening again, Council. So, it's not unusual for the Police Department to get requests for extra duty or off-duty type jobs. Recently, we've been asked to do traffic control at the school, at one of the schools in here in the city, and also to provide security for one of our retail spaces here in the city. Sometimes those duties require the use of a vehicle for safety, especially if we need the light system to alert drivers who are approaching where we're working. And presently, there is no system in place that allows us to bill for those. We can bill for the officers, but we can't bill for the vehicle. Obviously, that is still city property that's being used, again, in a law enforcement, but it's an off-duty type capacity. So what I'm looking to do is to implement an hourly charge for use of the vehicle that then can be put towards either maintenance or eventually vehicle replacement.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, so just a clarification. We do bill for our, our officers, but not for the vehicles.
Correct.
So this agenda item, just to clarify for our audience, is just so that we can start including our vehicles.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have any speakers?
We have a speaker, Miriam Cruz.
One, I want to thank Chief Burton for bringing this up. I am thankful for all you're doing. And second, I, I wanted to just reiterate that maybe this is something, this is sort of a, a, a moment to think about other ways that the city may be losing out on revenue by using, whether it's city property or city employees, or any other sorts of things that we should be probably charging that, which probably other cities do across Texas or across the country. So I'm thankful that you brought it up, and I implore all of you to look into other areas that we may need to do the same. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez.
Chief Burton, was Officer Doosterman, when he saved that baby's life, was it in a Socorro police card?
It was.
So then this, I, I really like this. This is great.
And this, and Ms. Cruz brings up a good point. This is something that area jurisdictions do around us, El Paso PD being the largest one, they certainly bill for their vehicle use.
Thank you.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez Esposito, Ralph Turan.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
All right, under the planning and zoning section of the agenda, item number twenty-four, discussion and action on the proposed conditional use permit for a mechanic shop for Lot Six, Block Two, Beige Estates subdivision located at one zero zero seven four North Loop Drive. And I hope I said that correctly, I'm not sure. Do I have a motion?
I spoke to the applicant.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Our, our staff and our, our commission also approved it.
If I can have Mr. Terrazas give his presentation.
I was going to say, before you made a motion, that the applicant requested that you delete this item. He doesn't want to pursue the conditional use permit anymore.
All right, so at this time?
So then I'm, I resent my motion and strike to delete the item.
Do you have a second for the deletion?
Second.
Thank you, sir. We have a delete, we have a motion to delete.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Navarrez Esposito, Ralph Turan.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
All righty, item number twenty-five, discussion and action on the plot replat approval for Navarrete Belango subdivisions for a lot split being all of Lot Five, Block Two, Sun Haven Farms at five five seven Sun Haven Drive. Do I have a motion? Council, do I have a motion?
Give me a minute. The reason why I'm asking, just to clarify, is that my, I brought the wrong folder. So this is not the backup.
Okay, so then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Terrazas.
So they're, they're just asking for a lot split here. The planning and zoning commission recommended that you approve this one with a condition that they adjust the panhandle to a minimum of a twenty-foot width. The reason is for, in case of an emergency. Also, the applicant mentioned that they, the, the purpose is because they want to install a second, a double-wide mobile home in the back, because she wants to live close to their parents to take care of them. And the other condition was to remove the single-wide to allow additional egress in case of an emergency.
That's what I was going to ask, what are the, what's the situ, what's the setup for the ingress and egress? Because it, it is in the back, so that was a safe, so how would that look like? Or can you just draw out where it would be the, the, the space for them to go in and out of the property?
So the space required here is a minimum of a twenty-foot driveway. That's required by the fire code in case something happens in the back. There's enough room for them to travel. The nearest fire hydrant is on this corner. So they do need the, at least the minimum required width in case of an emergency.
And then, we also heard that they are going to subsequently put in a double-wide. The double-wide would.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Ma'am?
So, obviously by seeing this, it was approved by the board, and it was with conditions, and it was approved also by staff. Obviously, they are complying with any ordinances, number one.
Yes, correct, so.
That we have in place right now.
Yes, ma'am, so the, the only thing that would be an issue would be this single-wide after they record the plat. This would become a zoning violation, that's why they agreed to remove it. They did ask for some time after they install the double-wide in the back to give them enough time just to move their things into the, the new home, and then they'll take it out.
Are there any covenants in that area?
That, that's one of the things that we couldn't find in the public records. But however, one of the residents who spoke earlier, he mentioned that when they bought the properties, they were limited to a single home per lot, but we couldn't verify that information.
He might, he might have told that, and maybe that might be true, but it's not recorded. No, and I, being in real estate, I understand. A lot of things are promised to you verbally, but not on paper.
Ms. Turan.
Looking at that, they want to put a double-wide in the back, but keep the single-wide to move everything. How are they going to get that double-wide to the back? It does not look like there's enough room.
We haven't talked about the time limit that they need, or the timeframe that they would need to move their things.
How are they going to?
Yeah, how are they going to move? If they want to put the double-wide first to move everything from the single-wide, then move the single-wide, I don't see how they're going to get it on the property.
Without encroaching.
We haven't talked about that issue.
Maybe that issue needs to be brought up before approving it. That could be a safety issue, number one.
Can, Jim, could we make?
Postpone.
Either postpone, or the, the approval contingent upon.
Set a time?
Or developing a plan?
Not the time, but how are they going to?
A plan to be able to situate a, a double-wide in the back while the single-wide is still there, so that they can vacate the single-wide to the, to the double-wide.
It appears there is no room to bring in through the front double-wide, even if it comes in two sections.
Jim, the, the. What, no, 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 the, the question, the proper question should be, they're going to be not legal com, um, not a legal, oh my.
Legal non-conformity.
Yes, but because if we allow them to, then right off the bat, because we already approved it, once they put the, that, they're already out of compliance. So, can we say, and allow them to? Because if we do this for them, then we're, we're setting precedence to do it for somebody else. So, should it be where we just say, once you remove that and you put the other one, then that's it? Because then we're going to set precedence in allowing for them to do that.
Yeah, but I think so, like, for a couple hours to get another one, you know, moving it, waves there, you know, like, for example. They can, they can buy you, remove the one that's there, bring in the older one, and still be non-conformal, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, but, but you're going to, they're going to want to leave the third one there until they move.
Only for a limited amount of time.
Right, so, are the question is, if we do that, what are the repercussions? Yes. Yes.
Giving them, giving them a window of time, a minimum or deadline, right, which they have.
Yes, which they.
So there, there's a.
Take everything out, put it in the new one, and then move it out.
I, I suggest thirty, because she's saying she's disabled, and she has two parents that are disabled. I don't know if they'll be getting any help for that.
Yeah, so, so there's a provision that allows, it doesn't, I know that this is, this is different, but when somebody is building a house, they can have a single-wide or a mobile home in addition, up to a year.
Oh.
While they're constructing.
While, while the house is under construction.
It's being constructed, but this is not.
However, this is just a.
Yeah.
Thirty days?
Yeah, that's, I think the law would require him reasonable time, I think, Council, that's true.
We should ask them, does she is disabled after how long?
Yeah, I was going to say, they are here, if you want to open the floor to them.
Mr. Pacheco.
We were going to remove them at the same time. We already have the double-wide, it's already been built. We've already purchased it. We're just waiting to see if this would be approved. But we already have the home, it's going to be done at the same time. We're going to remove that one, but we wanted to make sure, because it's grandfathered. And once we remove it, I won't have a home to live in. So I wanted to make sure first. But the home has been waiting since the end of last year.
Oh, wow, okay. And ma'am, you do have the, the sufficient amount of, of room to be able to put the double-wide in, yes?
Yes. But we're, well, we're taking the single out.
Right, but even if that just.
Yes. Yes. Well, they're separated, the pieces, so it's, yes.
They're going to move the single-wide, bring in the double-wide, and then they just put it back, so she can move out. Thank you for the clarification, ma'am. Do we have a speaker?
Alfonso Cruz Pacheco.
Yes, Council, I'm, I'm the neighbor, from Mr. Navarrez here. I'm proposing not to deny this plan replat in the grounds that I do have a contract when I purchased this property. As obvious, I think they do have one too. And it states here that we should be all making homes in that area. We all did homes, we built homes. Some, there's some mobile homes still there, and it's not really right, you know, for, some people have mobile homes, and we built our houses with a lot of hardships. See, it's right here with the, the plat, the form, the covenant, the covenant that came here with the contract stating that they were supposed to build a home within four years. I mean, I'm trying not to be a fair man to, to people, the next, my next-door neighbors, to, you know, put this mobile home, but it's really not fair for me, being my next-door neighbor. My value in my home is going to go down. Obviously, the property taxes probably not, but the value of the house will be, come down. That's all I got to say right now, at this time.
Thank you, sir. Just, if, I mean, I think that we are looking at two different things, because first of all, a double-wide is allowed in the city of Socorro, one. Two, I know, I don't know what contract you have, and that's one thing that Mr. Martinez may be able to answer. If it was a covenant in the contract, is there any legal bearing, legal standing for that? One. Two, did these individuals buy that property using the same instrument?
Right, I mean, what would, what would, the two relevant inquiries are, what's the contract for the subject property? Are there limits in that for this property? And then two, for any other restricted covenants, are they properly noticed and recorded in the county property?
So then, what, what recourse does a family have?
The, the owners.
The, the ones that are proposing to put, to do the lot split, yes, sir. Well, not recourse, but in terms of what would they need in, in order, if, if the gentleman is saying that there's a covenant, covenant in the, in the contract for that.
Or is he saying that he, he knows what covenants are?
Excuse me, I do have a contract, can I show that to you?
You can, we wouldn't do any good, I'm curious to know, is it the contract for this property?
No, it's, it's.
But it's, it's the, I'm sure they have one-two part that I can...
Right.
I mean, what matters is the contract, the words in the contract that this property owner has, that's relevant.
Right, so then, alright.
And, um, I'm curious to see if the covenants that you state that you have, does it say covenant? Was it registered at the county?
I'm pretty sure it did, 'cause it, it, it looks legal to me and it's covered with...
Who was the, who, who was the builder, the seller, or the developer?
Tom Burks.
Tom who?
Tom Burks, he's deceased right now, he's, he's not longer the owner. San Haven, I have no idea who the owner right now is.
Do you mind if I look at the covenants?
Well, the thing is, like Mr. Martinez said, there are covenants specific to his contract. But we're, we're not talking, but we, we would need to see the document.
The covenants would say subdivision of, yes, that's what they would say, subdivision of.
Well, if, if, if Council's okay?
Same street, same street, next-door neighbor.
Alright, sir, go ahead and approach the, the dais.
But if they weren't registered and, and we did our due diligence, right, to, to research them?
Go ahead and...
Okay.
Joe, did you check any, oh?
Ms. Rodriguez?
Did, did you check anything on county, see if there was...
Yes, we, we looked for everything we could, but we couldn't verify that information.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses to you.
You know, there's five mobile homes in that street.
They do look so real and it's a lot of pages. Does look like it's registered and signed. It has several buyers. But was it registered? It is at the county. I, I believe we should maybe postpone this and do, and have them check for that, because the covenants are covenants and it's for the subdivision.
Council, I'd like input from you all?
I'm not gonna call...
Sorry?
I'm, I'm trying to find the proper, I'm trying to find the proper words, but I'll just say it just the way it comes out. I'm, I'm not gonna call Joe Terrazas our, our planning guru, I guess. A liar, I mean, if, if he did do his, 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 his job correctly, I asked him point-blank, "Is it in the county?" He went and says, "No." So, you know, maybe yes, it's one thing that we, we had an issue as well where people brought us a covenant and yet it wasn't registered in the county. So, I mean, those are the issues that we're facing, because back then, when all these, and the City of Socorro wasn't even a city, yes, and it was dormant, everybody sold properties and they said, "Oh, well, this is what it is." And we came to find out that some of these covenants are no good because they were never registered. So, they would just give the documentation to the, the, the people who bought these homes, just like what we're seeing in other districts where you're, you're in a, on a floodplain, but they never were told. So, those are the things that we, we're looking at. If, if our staff already did the work, then, you know, uh, and, and, and they abide by our rules, then I don't, I don't think that we should go against our ordinances.
I don't think we're gonna go against our ordinances. I think that he has brought up a valid, valid point, that he does have a contract. Ms. Villalobos looked at it, and I think we should look at it. They've had their mobile home for a year. I don't think a, a few weeks is gonna make that much more difference. I think we need to do our due diligence, that's a term a lot of people like using. And I think we need to look at it and then come back. I mean, it's not gonna, um, affect anybody adversely. And I think, uh, we can look at his contract and then see if it is done down at the county. And see if the, the, um, if it was registered and maybe under a different name, you know, now we have something. Whereas before, it would've just been, yeah, Joe looked for it, it wasn't there, let's, let's vote on it, but now we have something we can look at.
I, I would recommend that we postpone till next meeting. I think two weeks is sufficient amount of time to just do the research. And if nothing shows up, then if nothing shows up, we move on.
And I'd like to ask you, what was the process, only because I've done this, uh, where I was told it wasn't found through the internet, which is this first process that some of us that know how to race, research this thing, because it is public information. But when you actually go down there and they do a, a more depth, uh, research and it costs money, uh, they might find stuff that we can't find publicly. And that's, I wanted to know what the steps were to take and, were taken in order to find, uh, possibly these covenants.
So, the first thing that we did is, we started looking at the original subdivision plat that was recorded. There's no co- those, there's no covenants or restrictions on the plat. And then, we also went into the Ocaso County Public Records and we entered several criteria using the legal description, using the address, using several names. Um, we went through the history of all the deeds that are recorded in the Ocaso Central Preso District. Um, we couldn't find any information related to any restrictions.
But, but the, but you, nobody went down to the county or called the county and, uh, asked for more, a more depth...
No, ma'am.
Research. You'd be surprised how some of those things are on canvas and they're put away somewhere else. So, and it's happened, I've seen it. So, if you wanna do your due diligence and do it yourself, sir, and go down there, it will have a registered number on there.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez?
I wanted to, uh, this is the legal home property, meaning it's grandfathered, because there's already a mobile home there. And we were taking that into consideration. Even if it was a covenant, since Wayne has that trade or bid there, and he, she just, or that property owner just has the legal home property because they're moving it. They would have to move that mobile home for six months before using their legal home property, which they're not, it's, it's what? I don't understand why, I mean, even if it's a covenant, they're, they're actually already a mobile home and a property.
So, just to clarify, so then just the, with the grandfather clause applies here in terms of, because it is a mobile home, it's still in effect?
Yes, that's what I was talking about, and she said it much better than I did, I think. That's what I was trying to talk about when I spoke the first time.
Okay.
And said, "Well, I mean, if they wanted a new one, just, just a replacement," and they moved that one out, and they bring in a new one, it's the same result, they're still grandfathered, it's still legal and conformal. And just because they moved one off the premises for an hour, or six hours, or two days, doesn't mean they moved the legal and conformal.
And... And the same would apply to the rest of the, of the, um, mobile homes in the neighborhood. So, then, at this point, the motion stands and we can go ahead and call the vote.
And, and the reason why is because not only is she grandfathered in, but she won't lose her status, because even if she moves this, she still has six months.
Yes.
And, and, and had I heard that in the beginning, I would've, uh, then it would've been a different conversation. She is grandfathered in, even though the covenants at one point, uh, stated that they couldn't, but because at one point, I guess they weren't, uh, being, uh...
Enforced.
Enforced, they became grandfathered, which, if our attorney's telling us correctly, it supersedes, um, uh, the, um, grandfather supersedes the, the covenant.
Alright.
And, all we're trying to do here is make sure that we're not breaking any laws for anybody. And make sure that we have all the information that we need.
Alright, go call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, item number twenty-six, another city manager section of the agenda. A discussion and action to announce the date on which city council will take final action on the tax rate and on the municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
Make a, well, I don't have the date with me.
Okay, do, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, to announce a date, uh, for the final, uh, tax rate of the municipal budget.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, um, we had presented a calendar for our budget year, so the date is September the twelfth to be our final, to make, to make a decision on our budget. However, I do know there's an item on the agenda where Mayor and Mr. Duran will be out of town, starting September the twelfth. So, that would mean that we would need everyone else to be present at that meeting.
My question for that is that, if we mo- if we agree on September twentieth to finalize our tax rate... Oh, the twelfth? Not the twentieth?
We have to finalize.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So, everybody should be here, correct? Oh, uh, Mr. Duran and Mayor are gonna be here. But if we miss that date, for lack of quorum, we don't have another extension, like a day, uh, uh, or another week that we can say, "Oh, we need a, an emergency," because things do happen. So, my question is, are we going to, just, just to say, like, for example, today, what if, uh, you know, Mr. Duran wouldn't make it, or myself, or any other one, we wouldn't have quorum? So, I don't want it to be, that is the last day possible, and yet if we missed it, we could've had another day or two where the possibility of saying, "Well, we can do an emergency one," or is it that's the final day? Could we just move it up a day or two?
I have a question, well, to, to piggyback on that. The September fifth is the first Thursday, so we have to have a special meeting just for the tax rate and the... So, couldn't we have a special meeting, uh, just after, no, yeah, maybe...
A day before?
The Wednesday?
The eleventh. Correct.
You don't have to do the second hearing and the adoption on the same day. All the cities split it up, you have the second hearing where you take public input, and then you have a later meeting where you take the action. That's just one option, I'm sorry, the question was, can you move it to...
Well, if we could move it, uh, maybe the sooner, the, yeah, either the eleventh or the fourth or the tenth. It means if it's a special meeting, it's a special meeting.
Are we gonna make sure...
I mean, yes, you can, there, there's, it takes me a while to work out all the dates, because there's a bunch of trailing dates, because it has to be four, three days after the first hearing, but like twenty-nine days after the budget was filed, and there's that many. Off the top of my head, I think, I know the eleventh would be okay, I'd be concerned about going the week before.
And we wouldn't wanna have it on Friday the thirteenth.
No.
No, no, I mean, I don't, I don't, oh, sorry.
You can leave it on the twelfth too, I mean, they, it's something you can't move up, you can, the city can add. There's a, there's a supermajority requirement in, in the tax code. If you're going to the rollback rate, if you go above the rollback rate, which are rollback rates, then you, you need sixty percent of the entire governing body, so sixty percent of six is, three point six is four. We need four, so if there's four people here, that's enough, it just has to be unanimous, three to one, you need five.
But, but, and, right, but to, I'm, I'm not saying that I wanna, wanna put anybody on the spot. What I'm saying is, you know, we cannot say that we're all gonna be in good health, or what happens if an accident happens. What I do not want it to happen is that that is the last day, and if something happens, if we can't make quorum, then we don't have another day that we can, I, I'm, the cushion is what I'm saying, it's just that...
So, you would rather have a full quorum?
The publication.
Have a day one?
No, no, I, I, I just wanted to, to say that if, if, even if they're not here, even if, if, if Mayor and, and Mr. Duran, like, they're not gonna be here for that, for that meeting, Jim, even if they're not gonna be here, what I'm saying is, just say that we move it a week prior, okay? No, no, I know, but just hear me out. What I'm saying is, that even if it was a week prior to the date, forget about the dates that we're talking about, okay? Just say that we have it a day, a, a week prior, and we don't have quorum, then we still have seven days that we can plug in another special meeting. Versus, that's the last day, and if we don't, if we miss the deadline, then we're, we're in trouble. Did, make myself clear? Okay, so that is what I'm asking. I need a cushion. It doesn't have to be a week, I'm just saying, I need a couple of days of a cushion, just in case something happens.
Well, you need to also have, uh, you need to also make a, uh, or factor in the fa- uh, the, the publication requirements for the next, for a special meeting.
You know what?
So, that's why I was asking.
They're not gonna be here, if we're gonna move it anyways, or pick another date, let's just pick another date, we're all here. I think the eleventh, everyone's here, right? And, and there's no, he just said that he believes the eleventh is, will be good.
Okay.
And, you know, it's one day before they need...
What do you guys think?
I, uh, that's fine, as long as we can do it at six o'clock, that's okay.
And make sure that, you know, everybody understands it's important that everybody's here.
Yeah. Or at least have quorum, that's what I'm saying.
I didn't even ask you, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so, he's gonna check on the eleventh, so we, we will schedule on the eleventh. If for whatever reason we can't do to the publications, we will still keep it to the twelfth.
Because you can, oh, you can let us go on the fifth?
Yes.
For, for next meeting?
We would have a definite answer.
I, I, I would say, well, now...
Okay.
Set the date now, you can change it if you have to, like, set the date now, like the eleventh, if that's, if that's the consensus. And I'm, I'm fairly certain that works, because I have my master list of, of date, my master check, date checklist. Um, I will figure that out by Monday, if there's any change.
Alright, so at this point, uh, I'll...
So, I'll amend my motion to, to set the date for September eleventh at six P M, here at Chambers. To set the tax rate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any speakers?
I don't know of all the date restrictions, um, that Jim's talking about, or Mr. Martinez is talking about, I don't know you that well, Jim. Um, but I was wondering if you could have a special, uh, meeting on the twenty-ninth to do whatever you were gonna do on the fifth, and then do whatever you needed to do the final, no? Okay. Alright, Ms. Navarre's already shaking her head, so I guess not. I was just, I was trying to come up with another solution. Uh, that's all I was gonna talk about, thanks.
And I guess, I guess what's important here is that the tax, the certified tax rule doesn't come out until, I think it was in July. So, everything after that moves fairly quickly and there's deadlines that we have to meet.
Right.
Post, um, like, our tax rate, our budget has to be in our website today, and there, there's things that we have to follow, and that's the reason why it's so rushed. If we would've received certified tax rates or sort of like...
Tax rules.
Before, that would give us a little bit of more apple time. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and that's why it seems like we're rushing, but it's, it's not that we wanna rush.
We're, we're supposed to catch them by July one. The entire scheme legislatively, the, all, all the multiple deadlines that are really elaborate, assumes, you can tell when they wrote it, they thought, "Oh, he actually come out in June." And they did. And over the decades, that's gradually gotten wider and later, and now it's a, it, not just we, but it happens in the bigger cities around the state, routinely get them after the deadline. I think this year it becomes like, now, there's almost twenty-first, I mean, that's, that's like...
Thank you, Jim.
So, it's like a...
And it's, it's not us, we, it comes from...
We're set each other calendar, yeah, absolutely. A call or question, please?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty. We go on to item number twenty-seven. Presentation and discussion regarding tax rate calculation rev- calculations, revenues, and expenditures for the City of Socorro proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand twenty. This is just a presentation and discussion.
Presentation and discussion. So, our budget hasn't changed from the initial presentation that Mr. Caziano did at the beginning. Uh, he's more than available to do it again. If you all have any questions, anything that you would like to add, take off, I mean, right now would be the time. We have posted this budget on our website today, meaning we, we, um, submitted it to the city clerk's office, right? So, it's, it's out for the public to view.
Um, we, we heard a gentleman, and, and this is, I think, the third person that I, that I hear about the app. Um, we need to do something about that. I think if we get a part-time person or something that we could just plug in there and try to update that, or if we can't and it's not feasible, then we should do away with that. Uh, that's one thing that, that...
But I think he's talking more about the follow-through.
The follow-through, yes, because there is, we, we don't have, um, it's a... The follow-through, yes, because there is, we, we don't have, um, it's a good idea. We implemented it a long time ago, but I, I know when talking with staff about that situation, it's that we don't have the staffing for it. So I was just add, wondering if, if we could see about just getting a part-time person and, and really go at it. If we can't, then we would have to.
Is there, uh, and that's a good point. Is there a way, and this is just a little bit off, but only because if we're considering adding or deleting things from the, from the budget, is there a way that head, uh, department heads can receive an alert when, when there's a, a concern that has been uploaded to, to the app?
Correct, I, all department heads receive a, a carbon copy of, so the app is used as a work order, okay? A lot of the times, though, is, and what Mr. Apolaca was talking about earlier, is that they, a substandard building, okay? We, we go out, we give a notice of violation. Um, we update the, the app, letting them know there was a notice of violation given. Then at the time where the citation is, is given to that person, we close the case. So they're told, okay, the citation has been issued. That doesn't mean, so, in our, in our case, the, the case is closed, right? It goes to court. Well, a lot of the times, either the owner is, has died, doesn't live here, and doesn't really care if there's a warrant for their arrest. So of course, the neighbor sees, well, this lot hasn't been cleaned. Why aren't they updating me? Why aren't they updating me? Because at that point, we've already closed the case, but the issue hasn't been solved, if that makes any sense. And then they, they go ahead and create another work order. We work on it again, but it's the same cycle. Right? Something that we're trying to get to work at, but we also have to budget for, is going in there and cleaning it ourselves, and then invoicing or placing a deed on the property. But we have to understand that our budget is very limited, and when we do that, we don't know when we're gonna get those funds back. Either they sell the property, or-
That's about it.
-there's a change in ownership. So you pretty much have to budget and say, you're not looking at, at getting that money back, i- if that makes any sense. Also, our ordinance says with substandard, the One Eye Jack building, that we've received several complaints. The people go in there, and, and it's, and it's boarded up as it's required through ordinance. They clean the weeds around it, but yes, it is an ugly building, but they are actually meeting all of what the ordinance states. Right? So then we have to start cleaning up those ordinances and making, um, stricter, right? And then again, we have a lot of historical property that gets protected through the historic district. So there's a lot of issues, there, there's complaints that come in for the irrigation district. That's not, we do as much as we can to work with these entities, but there's really not much, um, teeth that we have in order to fight those, right? We have the railroad, we have the, um, water irrigation district, and I'm not trying to make excuses, but we receive, we use our app the same. Our, our staff actually enters a complaint, or they see something, they enter it, cause that's the way we keep track of what we're doing. Right? So the work order comes in, it gets created, and then it goes to the staff to make sure that we go full circle. But sometimes, it's just, we close, because in our end, we've done as much as we can. But people see, hey, the lot's still dirty.
But they don't know the backstory to it.
Correct.
Do you, I, I know, because I, I just showed a house recently, and for the first time I saw that it's set there, the city would be coming in, this is in the City of Ocaso, would be coming in and charging them a hundred and eighty-five. I thought they'd be, they'd be charging more, cause the property, quite frankly, was a distress on the outside. I, you know, anyways, um, don't they, don't they tack on, like, they give them a certain amount of time to pay, and then if they don't, they add like a six percent every month until they pay, for the duration of whatever, you know, whatever the property-
No, here, once it goes to court, and the person doesn't show up, or doesn't comply, it turns into a warrant. Right? But that warrant can be, I mean, if you don't live here, or that person is no longer alive, I mean, there's really not much that we can, and it hasn't gone through probate court. And there, we have a lot of building and lots and property that have that situation.
All right, so then, Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Rodriguez.
So, uh, thank you for the, the explanation. Unfortunately, the gentleman left, but it's something that, uh, that needed to be said, so that you can explain it, so that people will know what's happening, what, what steps the city is taking behind the app. It's not that it's just not going anywhere, we are doing it. Thank you for the explanation, therefore, there's some clarity on it. Um, unfortunately, uh, like our staff mentioned, is, it's, it's a long time before they go to court and, and get everything done. I know that people get frustrated because they see it, but we've done our due diligence. So thank you for the explanation.
And we go back to the agenda?
Yes.
Um, so then, as far as discussion, we're okay with?
We're okay.
All right.
I, I, can I just add two mi- two little things?
Sure.
Because I'm a victim of, of what he's saying recently. Um, yes, I understand, but I don't think enough was done. Especially in my situation, the, the, the problem still is there. Uh, not as much, but it's there, and, and the fact that the fencing that was told that this gentleman had to place was very, uh-
And, and I think that we're, we're just a little bit off the agenda?
Oh, well, yes, but it was having to do with the app.
The app, okay.
Yeah, the app was just very vague, very vague, but, you know, I understand. I mean, you're not gonna cater to every single person that comes in, because then you, wouldn't be working on the items.
So as far as inclusion on the budget for, uh, a, um, part-timer is not there?
No.
Ms. Duran, did you want to answer?
Yeah, I think our app started out really good. The idea was that you could, uh, report a pothole, and it would get taken care of. But then, I think it got abused, I think is the word, where every little thing, and then they want, and Chief Burton can attest to that, they want instant results. And like you say, sometimes it takes over a year. But we get the black eye because we're not doing anything. Why reported it? Why has it not been taken care of? So I think we need to revisit the app again and try to make it a little bit more fine-tuned, maybe?
Maybe, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And, and we tweak it, um, like, when Chief came in, we, we went ahead and added, uh, nine-one-one. However, that wasn't working for us, so we, we went ahead and removed it. So we're working as we go with it, but it's a really good tool, and I would hate, because, yes, we get two, three complaints that don't get, but the fifty and sixty potholes that get filled and that get served, I mean, we don't hear about that good stuff.
Right.
Right? But I mean, I hear it, because I receive emails, and, and there's constituents that are really happy with what's going out on the streets, but of course, you only hear the bad stuff that, that's going on. But I can attest, and I can show you emails where people do, uh, praise us for the work that we're doing, because our staff goes out there and works every day, and when they don't, they'll get in trouble.
So-
But-
All right, so, at the risk-
But I know that every day, we, we, we strive to just do better, but can we get better? Yes, definitely.
And only because we're, we're, we're straying off of, of the agenda.
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, I was gonna say, we're gonna have people in discussion about the app, I would suggest we set, post an item for that purpose on there.
Right, but it was just, uh, for the inclusion or-
The inclusion of a part-timer in the budget. That's the only reason why, but yeah, I got you.
It, it is a related topic, I think, but, no, nonetheless, that's, we'll, we'll go ahead and go to the next item. Uh, item number twenty-eight. Uh, and again, number twenty-seven was presentation and discussion, so no action for that. Item number twenty-eight, under Mayor and Council, discussion and action to approve Mayor Elia García and District Two Representative Ralph Duran to attend-
Yes, sir, we have a paper on that twenty-seven right now.
I apologize. And, yes, ma'am?
I'll be quick. Um, I just wanted to mention that I believe that the solution would be to include, uh, more positions for code enforcers. And I don't remember if the budget called for that, Mr. Casciano, and if so, for how many, and if it's only for one, can we make it two or three? Um, cause I believe that's probably one of the issues, that's one of the issues that, um, I think would help out a lot, um, with the, um, ordinance violations and stuff. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention about the app was that I, I believe it is a good tool, but maybe that backstory can be shared, rather than this item has been completed. Um, I think that would, um, help constituents understand what work our staff has actually done. Um, that way, they at least have that information. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. All righty. Item number twenty-eight, under Mayor and Council, discussion and action to approve Mayor Elia García and District Two Representative Ralph Duran to attend the Aleo National Policy Institute on Emergency Response and Management, which will be held September twelfth through the fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, at the Hyatt Regency, Long Beach, California.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any speaker, are there any speakers?
No, speakers.
Call a question, please?
René Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cicernevaris De Sapsen, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombe Yalos.
Yes.
Um, we go on to the workshop, item number twenty-nine. I would suggest that we postpone this, because we don't have everybody here in terms of the-
I agree.
And I'd rather have the input-
Second.
I just, we, we added three different cities, uh, three conditions, so you all can go over it.
Sounds good. All righty, ma'am.
Jim? Mayor, I might also s- suggest, just, I think some of you have already found this, or some, somebody, some people sent it to you. If you go to the T M L website, I don't know how many you can do that, there's really good resources, and one of them, talks about city charters. And it's actually, they have on the T M L website, the, the entire book. It's a book published by Arrow Logic. Original edition was a long time ago, but it was, the latest edition is twenty-ten. And it's, it's a recipe for a city charter, recommendations, some, some historical analysis of how city charters have evolved. And useful when you're looking at stuff like this.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, Jim?
Sure, absolutely.
Can we? Purchase that book?
But that word, that is not a, that's not an agenda item right now.
We're, we're talking about charters.
Okay, well-
So, I'm just saying, since there is a book, the charters, would it be okay to purchase a book?
Yes, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's available anymore, I'm not sure it's a publication anymore.
But if it is, we could purchase it, and then-
If it is, and it's, it's on the website, I think, printed out, like, it's not giant, it's, I think it's a hundred and forty pages.
Oh, wow, okay, I'm just saying. But if we can't print it out, and it's available, we can purchase it, that's all I'm asking. Yes? But if it's non-downloadable, I mean, I'll download it. Okay.
All right.
That's it.
It was related to the item. All right, so then, so at this point, I'll introduce a motion to postpone, uh, item number twenty-nine, till next meeting?
Second.
I made the motion to postpone.
René Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cicernevaris De Sapsen, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombe Yalos.
Yes.
All right, at this time, is there a need to go into executive session? Yes?
Could we ask for five minutes?
All right, so at this time, I'll go ahead and introduce a motion to go into executive session?
Second, I mean, make a motion.
Second.
All righty, it is si- it is eight-twenty-nine.
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, at eight-twenty-nine, I will be back at eight-thirty-six, right, so I'll go ahead and call a question?
So is it a, a moment to second, or?
No, no, to take a, a recess.
Well, then, I thought it, well, we'll be going into-
Paul.
No, never mind. Just call a question about the executive session, it is executive.
Okay.
René Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cicernevaris De Sapsen, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
And Ivan Colombe Yalos.
Yes.
And we'll be back in, at eight-thirty-six.
Okay, got you, got you.